She has a more fun night planned than my family.
Can I get really close to you?
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you. Otherwise, feel free to use them however you wish. You are part of that, but third.
I'm good. Are we ready?
Let's go.
Joy's ready to go. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
We have an additional correspondence that I've passed out hard copies to the Planning Commission that will be included as public record. It's an email that will be added to the Liquid Lake View Correspondence. It will be available on the city website first thing tomorrow morning.
What did you say it'd be available what?
On the city website first thing in the morning.
Oh, sure. Okay. Noted. Everybody has a copy, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so let's make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Motion carried. Then we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes. The August 16th, 2018 Planning Commission minutes that were in our packet for review. Motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted by city staff.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to item number four. Public hearing, the Trident Development Concept Plan and Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we are reviewing a concept for Trident Development, which is a redevelopment of the property known kind of anecdotally throughout the city of Carver as the old bus garage or the old MyPillow factory. It's located at 926th Street West. Tonight, we are reviewing a concept plan and also a comprehensive plan amendment. On the screen right now is a general concept that has been submitted by Trident Development, so an idea of the type of project we're going to be talking about tonight. We'll go into some more detail, answer some questions. So again, topics for consideration, the concept plan, no formal action, but it's a great opportunity to provide feedback to the developer and staff. I'm also going to give an overview of the neighborhood meeting that was held at six o'clock tonight. We had six residents in attendance, some really thoughtful questions, comments, things we're going to work together on as a team to think through some of the information that was provided. And also the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So that's where the public hearing comes in for this portion of the project. We'll go over the concept plan first. I'll give some time for discussion, questions, and then we'll move into the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So tonight, we are discussing regiding the property from low-density residential to high-density for the Trident project. So the concept plan review, it's your first whack at a project. It's a great time for you to see it at first blush, give some feedback, things that you like, things that you don't like. It's very conceptual in nature. There are a lot of unknowns for the project, so if you bring something forward and we say, "I'm not sure right now," we really probably aren't sure right now. But as we continue through the planning process, we can work through some of those questions that you might have. It's a time for a developer to pitch an idea, to get some feedback before there's a significant investment in engineering and planning work, and it's not binding. So a quick way for a developer to get a feel for what the Planning Commission and council are thinking. And then moving into the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is a more technical planning process. So the city's comprehensive plan guides every property in the city of Carver with the best assumptions at the time of the plan development. So our current plan that we're operating under today is our 2030 Plan, which was drafted in 2008, which was prior to the city acquiring the property we're talking about tonight. We're currently working on our updated comp plan, and we anticipate adoption early 2019. And in the 2030 Plan that we're operating under today, the property is guided at low-density based on 2008 assumptions. And this is a formal planning process. So after your review, it goes to the city council on Tuesday of next week. Labor Day pushes us a day from our regular Monday, and then it needs to be submitted to the Met Council. If you'll remember about the previous Comprehensive Plan Amendments that we've done in the past couple of months together, there's also a pretty significant jurisdictional review. So every jurisdiction surrounding the city of Carver has a review period to be able to look at our plan, look at the proposed project, and let us know if it seems out of sync with the work that we're doing. So that time period has since closed. We've received no formal comments from surrounding jurisdictions in opposition to the project. So the property has quite a bit of history. I suspect that many of you know more about this property maybe than I do, but I will hit some high points about the project. So in December 2015, the city acquired the property for redevelopment opportunity. In February of 2016, the city council instructed the Planning Commission to determine guiding principles for site development. What are things that are important to the Planning Commission? What should be part of development? November 2016, the RFP, or the Request for Proposal, is issued, which is a way for a city to say, "We have this land. Show us what you've got. Use these guiding principles that the Planning Commission has set." January 2016, the city received two proposals for redevelopment. So if you were on the Planning Commission at that time, it was a development for twin homes and also a senior living facility similar to this project, a little smaller in scale. May 2017, the city selects Shingabee as a developer for the site. That's the senior living facility that was proposed. April 2018, Shingabee partners with Trident Development, who will be bringing the project forward. And that brings us to tonight. So we held a pretty informal neighborhood meeting tonight at six. Tonight, we're reviewing the concept plan and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And next Tuesday, September 4th, the council will review the same information. So those guiding principles that many of you probably were part of drafting, there were seven. So first was that there was a preference towards senior living. It should hit at a moderate price point. The existing berm and trees on the site should stay. The building should not be more than two stories. The appearance should look residential to be complementary to surrounding properties. And a garden area or landscape feature should be incorporated in the development. Which brings us to the site plan that has been submitted by Trident. So you'll see on the site, I'm going to click forward for some project details quick. So they're proposing a two-story building, which is 70 units, 21 units of memory care, 49 assisted living. The facility will include a common dining room, commercial kitchen, admin offices, as well as a wellness and fitness room and outdoor recreation. Again, we're at concept level, so all of this is really subject to change as we start to learn more about the site and how things lay out. So I'm going to jump back to the site plan that's provided. You'll see that the development, the entrance lines up with Lislewood Parkway. So something that's important to think about is Sixth Street as a collector in Carver and how we generally try to limit the number of accesses that pour into a collector to make sure that traffic patterns stay safe and that they can be managed in an effective way. So the property tonight has one entrance right across from Lislewood Parkway. It gives you a general building layout. The gray line, I won't call it a line, the gray stripe that wraps the building is a proposed trail on the site that could also be used for emergency access. So if for some reason a fire truck or an emergency vehicle would need to access the rear of the building, there'd be some opportunity there. We're still reviewing that with the fire marshal, again, subject to change, but something that we're thinking through in the development of the property. You'll also see that there is parking. Due to the nature of the units, several of the people who might be living in the facility likely won't have two cars. They might not even have one. So thinking about the memory care units, not driving, the assisted living, they could potentially have a car. So parking is largely provided for staff that would be at the facility, that's a 24-hour staff. There's also a limited number of covered parking, and the trash enclosure would also be included near the underground parking. So again, the rendering of what the outside of the building could look like. This is a project that Trident has recently constructed in Little Falls, but generally could be what the project looks like in Carver. And a little bit more about Trident. So they are very active in the senior living projects. So recent locations include Fridley, Chaska, Edina, North St. Paul, Shakopee, Marshall, Princeton, Little Falls, Delano, St. Michael, et cetera, et cetera. Chaska Heights is probably the closest one, if you wanted to drive by. It's a pretty close neighbor, the most, one of the most recent projects that they've done. Roger Fink is here with Trident, if you have specific questions for them, or if you'd like to get to know his company a little bit better. And a bit of an overview of the neighborhood meeting that was held. We had six property owners in the general area that attended the meeting. I gave essentially this exact same presentation, so if it's your second time hearing it, I'm sorry. Major concerns, one of the residents that attended is actually an administrator at a senior living facility, so it was like having an expert in the audience. So her comments were really thoughtful, things that we probably don't think about because we're not at a senior living facility day in and day out. So it was largely talking about exterior noise, so if there's chillers or air conditioning units, how does Trident mitigate the sounds that may be happening all year through both air conditioning and chillers? Generator locations, so the property will have a generator. Where will that be stored? How will it affect the surrounding neighborhood? Lighting in the parking lot, how to limit light pollution, make the area still feel residential? And then there were some general comments just about traffic on Sixth Street, some concerns about some of the water that runs off that site and how we can work together with the development team to hopefully mitigate some of those concerns as we learn more about it. And then some project-specific questions, wondering about like the trail that may be part of the property and the wellness program that Trident provides. Trident partners with Tealwood for management of their building, so Roger can speak probably more specifically to Tealwood. So Trident would do the development, and then Tealwood would step in to manage the project. This is a great spot, if anyone's watching and they're interested in keeping up with this project. It's just a quick screen grab of me on my computer today. If you go to the city of Carver's website and hover over development and construction, the dropdown will come down. The 920th Sixth Street West page is a great place to check if you're wondering what we're up to, where the plan is, when the next meeting might be. My contact information is also available on the page, so if you have a question for me, I'm more than happy to answer it. If it's more Trident-specific, I will likely connect the two of you together in an email. But if anyone's interested in keeping up with the project and when it might come before the Planning Commission and City Council, again, this is a great resource. So I'm going to pause there for just the concept plan review. We'll come back after a brief discussion to talk Comprehensive Plan Amendment, but if you'd like to discuss general feedback, comments, concerns with staff or the developer, now's a great time.
I wasn't here for the meeting, so I have a couple of questions. There was a comment in here on the lots and zoning about the developer will likely request reduced setbacks for the development of the site. I'm not familiar with the setbacks in a high residential facility. Can you?
Sure. So the information that we have in our city code today largely doesn't apply to a project of this scale.
Okay.
So we are likely going to use a PRD, or Planned Residential Development. That gives us some flexibility in the type of development that's going to be there, and it gives us some flexibility in the setbacks. So it's largely the front setback that is likely towards Sixth Street that we're going to need to think about where the parking lot is in comparison to the property line.
Okay.
Typically, in residential developments, that falls between 20 to 30 feet, and having a parking lot setback that far with everything they need to fit in that site isn't probable.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Erin, couple of questions for you, just for clarification, and then if I could, make a few comments as well. For my own clarification and then knowing where we are in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan process, would this amendment be for the 2030 Plan or the 2040 Plan?
2030. So though we are developing the 2040 Plan right now, we're still operating under the 2030 until it's formally adopted. So it seems, it's in an interesting spot of plan development right now, but it would be an amendment to the 2030 Plan that we've been talking about in the 2040 Plan.
Got it, thank you. And also, as it relates to the slide deck that we've seen, when we saw the rendering of what it could look like, the piece on the bottom, right there, 60 unit, and if you fast-forward a couple to the details, it says 70 units.
Yes.
Can you, is that just a discrepancy, or is there, that's, can you explain the difference in that?
Yes, absolutely. So during the concept phase, things change pretty quickly. As we start to dial into the site layout, we've probably gone back and forth with the developer, probably three times, landing on different numbers each time. This concept was just provided pretty early in the planning phase when we anticipated it being 60. So currently, we're talking 70 units. Likely will change before it comes before the Planning Commission again, but likely falling somewhere in that range between 60 and 70.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can make some comments? I personally, I'm really excited to see this project come forward into the community. I think it aligns with what we've been talking about as a community, our vision for aging in place and housing, providing housing for all generations. And then as it relates to the site development, I think the guidelines that the Planning Commission was charged with developing back in 2016, that this concept fits those guidelines. If you wouldn't mind fast-forwarding to the, or going up to the site plan itself?
Sure.
Just a couple of things that kind of popped out at me. Not having that second access point for emergency vehicles and then looking at how the land, how the actual islands within the parking lot are laid out. I just want to make sure that as we're progressing through the development, that we have enough room for those emergency vehicles, especially the large fire trucks, to make the turns around those islands and navigate around that. And to that, and also, as it relates to the islands, I do like the concept of having some visual barriers or breakups. We do, because of the proximity of the housing across the street on Sixth Street, having those homes look at a sea of bituminous is not necessarily pleasing. So to the extent that we could provide some visual breakups through landscaping or other birmingham or other ways, I think that would, that would be a nice value add for the residents who are already in place. And then a question, a related question, I couldn't tell, I can see from the contour of the lands, I think I know where the berm is, but the existing trees and have, I think there, I think I heard the developer say that you're going to try to preserve the existing trees and work within the topography that's there. Just curious if we've had any conversations on what that might look like, because there are some mature trees that provide both noise and visual barriers.
So if the project moves forward, as part of a full preliminary plot submission, a tree survey is required, and that's where we dial into the amount of trees that are going to be lost and the amount that need to be replaced. So anecdotally, it's the intent of the developer to keep the mature trees. That might change as they think through construction, if they need dirt storage somewhere. But moving forward with preliminary plot, that's when we dial in, get the landscape plan, recognize how many inches might be taken out, and that's when our city code steps up and gives them the limits that they're able to take out.
Madam Chair, I have a few more comments. Thank you. And then I had an opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting, and some of the comments that were brought up, I shared those same concerns, so I was happy to hear some of those as it relates to both the noise and then light pollution. So in particular, the generators and the chillers. And so maybe a question for the, for the developer, given the topography of the land or even staff, the orientation of the building, and then the site in proximity to where the residential units are, I'm wondering if you've given any thought on preference to whether the chillers would be placed on the rooftop or on the ground? And, and you don't have to answer that now, but if you have the answer or know the answer, I would certainly like to hear that.
Roger, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself first? Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Roger Fink. I'm representing Trident Development out of St. Cloud this evening. Thank you very much for your questions and your input. We're very excited to be introducing this concept here this evening. And thank you for your question. It's very difficult to know at this point as to the placement of some of that noise-generating equipment. I am familiar with the topography, however, and it would be my opinion at this point that the more equipment we could place on the ground and not on the roof would cause less sound disturbance to the neighbors, because that berm rises eight to 10 feet from where our, you know, building level is up to where their backyards are. Yeah, so I would kind of look for that. And again, as I mentioned in the neighborhood meeting, the placement of those outdoor air conditioning condenser units will kind of depend on the zone that they're serving. So there could be a few in the back and a few in the front also.
Thank you. And then also, maybe while you're up here, another question as it relates to the lighting. Now, I heard you say, or I thought I heard you say at the neighborhood meeting, that there are plans to have lighting in the parking lot area. I think that's great, and I think you said that you would do some shielding to keep that light pollution at a reasonable level for the residents that live there and the neighbors that would, might be subject to that light. Still concerned because there's such an open area, especially for those across from Sixth Street that may not have those visual barriers there and, and actual maybe landscaping tall enough trees to reduce that light. If, if there is a possibility to give thought to maybe creative problem-solving as it relates to reducing that light pollution, I would ask that you consider those things. It could be as simple as having it just lowered a few feet.
Right.
But if you could be open and sensitive to that, I would appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. If I may just offer some feedback on that. Thank you for the question, and I appreciate the exchange of ideas. The, with each plan, or each project that we do, we generally prepare a photometric lighting, exterior lighting plan. And in doing so, we ask the electrical engineer to make sure there's adequate light coverage over the parking lot, so there aren't any dark spots, and everyone has secure lighting in the evenings. We can adjust the height of those light poles. Generally, they're 20 to 25 feet. I've not seen many work very well that are under 20, so you might be thinking about that. Other things that can be considered there is, would be landscaping in the parking lot islands. Typically do that, and especially if we put some overstory trees there, that'll be helpful. I would also add to my thought that the existing spruce trees that currently run along the, I want to call it the east side of Sixth. Am I got my directions correct there? But the, you'll see these spotted symbols that kind of run parallel with Sixth. Those are some very majestic, in my view, blue spruce and Colorado spruce there. I would love to be able to preserve those, not only because they beautify the site, but I think they add a very, very important screening element between our property and the parking lot and the neighbors across the street. So I will be asking our team to manage as best they can to preserve those. When you continue towards town, well, I say on the opposite side of the driveway there, those trees are more deciduous in nature, and I'm not quite sure if they look like ash trees. I'm not quite sure how healthy they are. They're certainly mature, but we'll have to evaluate those to see which of those are, should be saved and which should be, should be removed. But just back to the spruce trees for a minute, those do continue all the way around on the plan here, the left-hand side and then the bottom of the screen. Again, those are all about the same maturity. I would guess they're in the 20 to 25 feet height, maybe more, very full, serving a very important screening buffer. And those are at the top of that berm. So as long as we can preserve the contour of that berm, those should remain undisturbed.
Madam Chair, I have two more comments. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me as I'm dominating the conversation here this evening. Emergency calls, I think we heard about this from the neighborhood, and we know that's the nature of the business. And I think in having that vision of wanting to age in place, we understand that that's, that that places an additional demand on services. So for the city, this isn't a lot of units, so I don't know how much demand this will increase. But as we listen to some of the concerns that our residents and then who also happens to work in the industry share, as it relates to slips and falls and response times, fire prevention activities, because that's a higher, higher risk being a, and then wandering off if we're in a memory care, and what kind of systems are in place. In the other, you're very active and you have developments in different communities throughout the state. What kind of relationship do you have with the local jurisdictions in terms of working with medics, EMS providers, the local law enforcement, just to stay on top of issues and collaborate to make sure that we're all working towards that shared vision?
Some communities, thank you for the question, some communities have some existing property management programs or crime reduction programs, either that are organized by the management companies locally, together as kind of a coalition. Or sometimes these programs are sponsored by local law enforcement to try to, you know, do the best we can to not invite criminal element or any incidents to start happening around the property. There's certain things that you do or don't do that help, help that situation. I want to address the emergency calls a little bit. Yeah, I mean, I can't ignore that, there will be some of that. The property is managed and staffed 24/7, so there will be individuals on-site to intervene and help perhaps monitor or control the need for a 911 call. We also have a great emphasis on assisting our residents build their core strength, build their balance and their muscle strength, and to be able to work towards fewer accidental falls. We also make sure that our facility is designed and constructed so as to not create those, those potential problems. Very simply, the, we strongly discourage our residents from placing any rugs down in their back. bathroom or in their living room. Even though it might be beautiful, we find that typically tripping over those things. We look at those little details very carefully to try to limit the number of falls that happen, certainly not only for the residents' protection and safety, but, you know, our families of those residents are also very important to us too, to make sure that they're in a, residents are in a safe and secure environment. So, when those incidents do happen, we do have emergency call features within the building. Residents can have a pendant or a wristband that'll automatically notify the onsite staff so they can mobilize to that situation and be able to manage whether or not it really deserves a 911 call or not. As far as controlling, I think we call it elopement in the industry, I don't know if I buy into that word so much, but...
That sounds a little more fun.
It does, doesn't it? So, our, all of our ingress and egress points of the building are monitored and controlled. The primary entrance to the building will be at the front, the main entrance, and that too is a controlled entrance. So, there's only certain ways anybody can get into that front entry. The other exit points of the building also have devices which alert our staff if anyone is exiting that door. Whether they're supposed to or not, they're alerted, so we know what kind of activities going on exiting and entering the building. In the memory care wing, it's even higher of importance. To get out of any memory care door, you need to know the code. There is what they call a special egress device, so you punch in a four-digit code and that will disable the lock so that staff can then escort staff out there. In the event of an emergency, those special devices are disabled so that door's no longer locked and exit can be made without knowing the device number. That's only in those rare cases. So, we're very, very attuned to the potential of elopement and do our, you know, level best to control that. Did that answer most of your questions?
It did. Thank you very much, very thorough response. My last comment this evening, at least for now, has to do with the trail connections and the gardens. I think in our guiding principles, the gardens are important to us, and of course, trails and connectivity to our larger city or public trails is ideal. And I know we're in the early concepts of what this might look like, but I would just ask that you would consider making those connections where possible so not only the residents benefit from being able to enjoy the beauty of the landscaping in the gardens within the site, but hopefully, families who are choosing to live here already have residence and other families here, and so, being able to connect through trails on your bike from their own residence to visit mom, dad, grandma, and grandpa in this, in the facility here would be ideal. So, there's definitely a public benefit to those connectivities too.
Yes, indeed. The trail we spoke of earlier that wraps around the rear of the building was kind of a recent addition in response to what we thought was coming from the fire department for emergency access. But we don't see here yet, and you'll see it in future renditions, is a better sidewalk pedestrian design that'll connect the front door, the parking lot areas, and the driveway out to the sidewalks. That just hasn't been designed in there yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have some comments and feedback. First, just looking at this drawing, one of the roads has been renamed. Sunny Ridge Lane is on the map.
Excuse me?
It says Sunny Ridge Lane, and it should be Lislewood Parkway.
You are correct. We had that correction made at the staff meeting last week.
Thank you.
Hasn't made it to the plan.
And then, looking at that driveway, is it decided? Or, I guess, either way, I'm going to offer my comment is, I would like to see a stop sign there.
Exiting.
Exiting. Do we know?
Onto Sixth Street, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, on the south side of Sixth Street where you enter and exit the driveway?
That would be required.
Is this already part of the plan or just too early?
No, that absolutely is part of the development of a plan, but a stop sign would be required to get onto Sixth Street.
Okay, okay. So, that's already a requirement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, these are things that, I can echo what Dana had mentioned and also what was shared at the neighborhood meeting, is the parking lot lights. So, when you get to that point of the exterior lighting plan, that idea of maybe something not over 20 feet, I'm not sure what appropriate height is, but it's nice to know that you're going to work with us on that and that that's, you know, been thought of. And I do really like the idea that this type of project has been done in other surrounding communities. So, I'm really hoping that things that you've learned from past projects, you can share with us so that this is successful, such as if you have historical data or just anything that would help us as a city be prepared for the resources that we'll have to put towards this, such as the number of medical calls, being that usually the first on scene is going to be a volunteer firefighter or the deputy that we contract. So, maybe just knowing how we can best be prepared for what resources would be needed from our city. And also on that tone, like, resources from the city. On the apartments, do they have like a half kitchen, a full kitchen? Is there a full bath? Is it?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. Thanks for bringing it up. You know, that's one of the things we like to talk about is what are the amenities, what are the features, especially the common area and the apartments? So, when we design our assisted living apartments, we want to be sure that there's adequate space and that the residents feel at home there. It's a huge transition from a single family to back into apartment or whatever their situation might be. So, we do everything we can to make sure that they feel comfortable there. We do have a fully appointed kitchen, full-size refrigerator, microwave, range and oven, stove top ventilation, lots of cabinetry, and upgraded faucets and sinks, both in the kitchen and the bathroom. We'll be happy to share some photographs of some existing units, would be helpful probably at our next meeting. And then, in the bathrooms, the bathrooms are all designed to be able to accommodate wheelchairs, so they're extra-large bathrooms with plenty of floor space, handicapped accessible showers with grab bars and seating available there as well, removable shower head for assistance with showering, you know, full-size mirror and vanity lights, linen closets, wider doorways for walkers and wheelchairs to get through there. And we've been using LED lighting throughout the units as well. We like that because we can deliver a brighter light immediately. When we were using the CFLs, you know, it took probably 10 minutes or so before they got to full brightness, and that bothered us and it bothered the residents. The LED product has become much more affordable now, and we like it very much. The other thing that the bathrooms will have is heat lamps that not only give off more light, but they generate that important heat element there in the bathrooms too. The units also come complete with storage closets and washer and dryer in each unit. So, each resident will have their own private washer and dryer in the unit. They won't need to be dealing with any common laundry or getting their laundry mixed up with someone else's accidentally, so. The bathrooms also have an emergency pull cord, so if there happens to be an incident in the bathroom, they can easily call for help from there. And the units will also have two locked cabinetry. One cabinet is keyed only for the nursing staff, and usually, the medications, any controlled substances are locked in there. The, so that, those are administered then when the nursing staff comes around to assist the resident with their medications. There's another locked drawer that's only just for the resident. So, they have, if they don't have their own secured safe or vault or something that they bring with them, they would have the option to lock up their valuables in that lockable cabinet in the unit as well. I've covered a lot of the amenities, there's probably some missing, but we really try hard to have a very state-of-the-art, yet very residential and welcoming type of units there. Seems like you had another comment too. I wanted to mention maybe the outdoor lighting. So, the evolution of the parking lot lights have gotten to the point where we're able to use LED fixtures there as well. And with the design of the light head at the top of the poles, we're able to shield the actual light element from the neighborhood and control where that light shines down on the parking lot. So, we'll do that photometric plan and make sure we have proper coverage of the parking lot, but also that it's not spilling out onto the neighboring properties as well.
Thank you. That answers some questions, and thank you for the response to my feedback. That's all I had.
Okay. I want to make a couple of comments because I've been on the planning commission a long time. I've seen a lot of the history of this property. I was part of the planning commission when we came up with the guidelines for this property, and I am delighted to see this type of facility come to this property. This is exactly what we envisioned years ago when we had the opportunity to have a piece of city-owned property that we could control in a little bit better of a way. We wanted to bring that senior living care facility to Carver because we didn't have anything like that and didn't know when we would and wanted to make sure we would, to have that diversity of housing and type of care amenity within our town. But I also, and we've, all the comments tonight, and I'm sure in the meeting previous with the residents, have commented about making sure that this is a good neighbor because all the occupants of this piece of property were not good neighbors. And so, we want to remedy that as well. And, you know, that's largely, you know, so when we were sitting on the planning commission and knowing the history of the property and trying to figure out how to make this, whatever comes here, a good neighbor, that's why we said keep the berm, right? Keep that outer edge so that all the residents who are around it don't really see a change and have that sort of shielding from whatever is here. We've also talked about the lighting and the impact to the neighborhood. We've talked about the trails and the integration into the neighborhood. If there's anything else, based upon your experience, I mean, we're just sitting on the planning commission, but if there's anything else that you know of based upon previous developments that helped make this type of property be a good neighbor, please, we welcome those ideas.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about this because it's something that oftentimes doesn't come up in the black and white, bricks and mortar sort of discussion. And that has to do with the kind of the community environment that begins to evolve in our facility like this. We find that the residents begin to socialize, probably socializing better than they were before they moved in, with planned activities, events, parties. There's always lots of things going on in these facilities that have the residents involved and socializing and interacting. We charge the executive staff and the marketing team to reach out into the community, get involved with the Lions Club, the Rotary, the Chamber, the churches, the senior center, all of those community organizations, and find ways to interact, find ways to bring them to our facility, show them what we have, dream up ways that they can involve the residents in those activities, bring a presentation in, whether it's some kind of educational program or entertainment or whatever. Some, I mean, every community seems to have a little different personality to it and depending on the residents that are there. The property over in Chaska, I heard a story just last week. We have a wood shop in that facility. Not every property is large enough to be able to afford a wood shop, but we understand that there are more power equipment tools in there than you can shake a stick at, and a group of men who are good at woodworking and some that maybe aren't even so good have gotten together and put together a program where they are building bunk beds for needy families. So, these bunk beds are being manufactured there in Chaska, shipped out the door, and donated to these needy families, and that's just one small aspect. We also have women's circles that are doing quilting and knitting and arts and crafts and involving the community in that stuff. We see garden clubs come out and help us with plantings and landscaping. It's just in a variety of things all over the place. We take great pride in the exterior appearance of our properties as well as the interior. And so, I welcome you, invite you to visit any of our properties to, you know, see firsthand how well they're maintained. So, you know, being a good neighbor means, you know, keeping your front door clean, keeping your yard clean and picked up. We have onsite maintenance staff that look after that year-round. Then, like I said, that involvement with the community is just one of those things that is invaluable and really hard to put a tangible number to, but it certainly is very important to being a good neighbor and important to being successful in the community.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to go last.
I've had most of my questions answered, but do you have much experience shoehorning a facility like this into a residential area?
It seems like anything we do lately is a shoehorned situation. I can think of several examples, but not so much residential. It does have a lot of similarities to the Little Falls development that we did. I brought up Little Falls before, earlier tonight, because it too is a two-story structure, and it's surrounded on three sides by residential. And on the backside is sort of a half a block away from a main state highway that goes through Little Falls, so there's commercial to the backside of us. But the other three sides are all residential, very long-established residential. They, in Little Falls, they don't quite benefit from the berm or from that large stand of mature spruce trees, but we've never had, to my knowledge, any conflict or concern from the neighborhood about that. It's been very welcoming. I know when we did our neighborhood meeting there, there was a number of residents from the neighborhood across the street that came in, and we got acquainted with them, and they were very eager to see this project move forward, so. I guess to answer your question, we have done that in some cases, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be the last to make a few comments and to say thank you for answering all of our questions so far. We really want to reinforce that it is a collaborative process, so we appreciate that. Just going back to the fire truck point, which will be brief, but obviously, we all know that we need to be able to access emergency vehicles into the parking lot, and so, if that, which this shows that if that's not a doable thing, it looked like from your other plans, you have a variety of options for the parking scenarios to work around. That being said about lighting and, you know, utilizing emergency vehicles, I'll just say from my own experience, I just want to pass it on, and there's multiple times that I've had to call 911 from my own parent, and four out of five times, I've been able to say, you know, no lights, no sirens, and which sounds kind of corny, but it's really a privacy thing for the resident, but also, your neighbors are really glad that, you know, a fire truck isn't, you know, isn't lights and sirens all the time. So, I just think that's just an educational component for residents and staff, you know, to be aware of, that that's an option.
Okay, good to know.
Then, let's see, the next point I would just like to say is, you know, it sounds like, I'm just grateful that the community meeting occurred. I was not part of that, so it sounds like the comments and concerns were brought forward and are being managed adequately. I think that's a great opportunity. And then, the last question that I really have is, part of our guiding principles, when we went back to that, it just kind of triggered a thought for me because we had a moderate price point as item number two, and I don't know where any of the price point discussion falls into this. And I don't know where any of the price point discussion falls into this, I don't know if it's now, if it's down the road, or, or how that plays into it, I just wanted to bring it up as a, as a missing content. And if you have any comments to share about that.
Regarding price point?
Right.
Okay.
Or accessibility, or what we're gonna call that.
At this point, I don't have a lot to say about price point. Uh, we're still developing our, our income pro forma, we haven't priced the units out. We have a general idea of what assisted living, um, should bring in Carver or Carver County, we operate the one in Chaska. That is a different community, different demographics, different, um, affluence there as well, but, um, in terms of price point, uh, we have brought forward, I think, a application for tax increment financing as a housing district, and we understand, we've done this a number of times with housing districts, where, um, a certain number of units will be required as affordable. So if we are successful with the tax increment district, uh, you will find that we will have at least 20 of our 70 units will be affordable. And that means that we have to be sure that those are rented to individuals who meet a certain minimum, excuse me, maximum income threshold, yeah.
Is it 20 or 20%?
Uh, it'll be 20%, so total of 14 units. Excuse me if I misspoke on that.
And that's a good clarification, because I heard 20 as well. Okay. You're, and then, thank you for answering that. Um, the, is Chaska set up that way? Your Chaska?
Uh, Chaska Heights Senior Living does have a housing tax increment district on it, so yes, we have, uh, I think we have more than 20%, but the minimum requirement was 20%.
Okay.
And, um, I'll elaborate a bit more to say that, uh, we, we do our best to manage the, um, request from residents who are on the elderly waiver program, so that's a county state subsidy program through.
Which is an in-demand program.
Excuse, excuse me?
I'm sure that's an in-demand program.
It is, it is, and, and so it's a very good fit for assisted living to qualify and receive and admit those individuals who, uh, are qualified for elderly waiver. Because if they meet the elderly waiver income test, they automatically meet the test for our, for our TIF agreement.
Sure.
And so if we can, you know, get in that 20%, 25% elderly waiver, um, it's a good fit for both us.
And the community.
Forable units.
Sure. Okay. Um, can you just, uh, clarify where the facility is in Chaska?
I sure can.
Yes.
Um, Hazelton Golf Course.
Okay. I think I knew, I just wanted to make sure.
So Hazelton Boulevard intersects with County Road 41. Um, I remember the name of that street, but at that intersection, the, uh, property is on the west.
West side, sure.
So it's right on the west side, you really can't miss it.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
No. I think we need to open the public hearing.
Yes, okay, then we'll move, thank you very much. We're gonna move forward with opening our public hearing.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Okay, so we will now open the public hearing. If, um, we have anybody who would like to make a comment or have a question, raise your hand and jump up and down, you know, can come forward. Okay, can you step up here? We'd like to see you closer. And then, can you stand right over, yep, there we go, we're gonna have you trade seats.
Why don't you run this all one back for me?
Welcome. And then if you can state your name and address for us?
Uh, Ryan Schultz, uh, 995 Sunny Ridge Drive, so I'm pretty much right across from the plot of land.
Okay.
Um, so, two questions or things like that. Um, one would be fire hydrants. Um, is there suitable placements for those fire hydrants? I'm pretty sure it's already built into the plan since there's already secondary roads planned into it, um, as well as for the lighting issue. I know it's been covered multiple times, but instead of having, let's say, lighting in the middle of the streets with podiums and such, um, would, let's say, a lighting on the bottom, um, like sort of like a street lighting type of thing work as well? Um, instead of having it go up and then down, um, you can have lights covering from the ground and relay across the parking lot so that the berm covers it, there won't be a nice pole that you would see and might come out light, um, where a bottom lights would completely eliminate that, um, in total. But that's all I had.
Can I just ask you a question? Can you just clarify, just so I understand you right, as far as the fire hydrants? Do you have a concern of where you think they're going to be?
Um, not where they might be, but would it sort of, if we're having problems trying to find like a secondary route into the berm, would it be in the primary area where there isn't a whole lot of, it would go, have to go across the parking lot, or would it be stationed right in front of the building easily accessible?
When you access the property from the path.
Oh, right, right, right.
Instead of from the main parking lot entrance.
So we need to consider that.
We need to make sure that emergency vehicles can access fire hydrants from that path.
Okay.
And then if we have the proper piping and stuff like that, if we have to install one and all that other stuff.
I think we got it now, but would you like to comment on that? Yes, that would be fabulous.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, regarding the fire hydrants, uh, I think that we can rest assured that the fire department and the fire, the, the fire prevention code is quite detailed and quite elaborate in terms of where the placement of fire hydrants need to be so that the fire apparatus can properly connect, there's not too much distance between that. So we will be going, working closely with the local fire marshal, fire chief to be sure our fire suppression plan is, is correct and we've got all the proper locations for hydrants and accessibility. That oftentimes will not only have several new hydrants in our parking lot and, and connection at the building, but I wouldn't be surprised to see a hydrant or two in the rear of the building, so that if a fire truck has to get back there, there's a place to connect the hydrants. Uh, don't know that, it hasn't been fully developed yet in terms of that, that, uh, park plan.
Sure.
Uh, in terms of lighting, um, I would ask if you think about if ground light, ground mounted lighting were used above the parking lot, it'd be extremely difficult to shield the source of that light. Generally, that's what is most, uh, I would say, if they see, oh, if they see, uh, the light source coming out of that fixture, that's what's usually most annoying. Uh, the other thing that crossed my mind was how easily that ground mounted floodlight can be blocked by a car or a tree or a snowbank or something and then, then lose that floodlight on, on the surface. Uh, the new LED lights, I've been impressed with the way that the, um, light beam seemed to disappear as opposed to a silicon vapor or mercury halide where you can really see the glow of that light through the air. Somehow the LEDs are less visible that way, but the parking lot lights are very, very interesting. And, uh, so I would really ask we continue with overhead lights so that they're not disrupted by any ground.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you both for your comments and responses.
Madam Chair, can I hop in for a second?
Certainly.
So I want to give a little bit of clarification for people watching at home, that the public hearing right now is related to the comprehensive plan amendment. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna run through just a really quick couple slides about that. So on the screen right now, we have sections of the plan with the property circled in a red dash line. So on the 2030 comprehensive plan that was drafted in 2008, it's guided for low-density residential. As we've been working through our 2040 comprehensive plan, we have since, the city has since acquired the property, developed the RFP, started some of the planning processes, so in the 2040 plan, it is guided for high-density, but to make that switch for the development of the property today, we do need to make the formal application to the Met Council. So the planning commission is holding the public hearing related to the comprehensive plan amendment. So that was just a really brief overview, but the next steps start at number two. So discuss the comprehensive plan amendment. You've already opened the public hearing, no need to close it and reopen, you're absolutely fine. So from here, you'll close the public hearing, discuss, make a decision to forward to the city council, related specifically to re-guiding the property from low-density to high-density in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
But we do need to close our public hearing, right?
If no one else likes to speak, yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll formally, um...
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So I have no concern with the comprehensive plan amendment change from low-density to high resident, high-density residential. This was what we had discussed as part of 2040, it's what we've kind of discussed as part of, um, you know, the, when the city acquired the property, this was kind of the vision we had talked about, some kind of higher density, um, to support, um, senior living, assisted care type housing.
So your comment was that you had no concern?
I have no concerns, I fully support it, yeah.
Right. I feel like it, my personal opinion is we've consistently talked about that as well, so it, it's not anything surprising or new, and it does fit everything that we've looked at doing from a visionary standpoint.
Okay.
Anybody have any other thoughts or comments?
No, I agree. I think for the general plan to have, um, this type of facility blend in, um, everything they're showing really looks like it will, and, um, it'll be a good working together to make that happen.
From a collaborative standpoint, sure.
From a collaborative standpoint. So, I recommend, um, making the change to the comprehensive plan as an amendment.
So is that a motion?
I will make a motion.
Make a motion!
Uh, that to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment for the development proposed by Trinity Development.
Trident.
Trident, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, so now we're moving on to item 4.2.
Correct. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, we do have a second public hearing tonight related to development of Lakeview Industries. So a few renderings on the screen that we've previously seen from Lakeview. The planning commission most recently reviewed this plan at the July 19th meeting, so it was concept level at that point. We've been working with the development team, their engineer, to work on preliminary plat at this time, so tonight we'll be reviewing preliminary plat, rezoning, and then Brent, our city manager, will be discussing the TIF district as well. So topics for consideration, rezoning, the property right now is zoned agricultural, and for development of the Lakeview site, it is required to be rezoned for industrial use. So tonight, related to that, there will be a public hearing, you can take public comment, close the public hearing, have a motion on rezoning. There's also the preliminary plat approval, we'll discuss that, a motion related to that, and then the TIF district, a third motion. So collectively, there are three motions. If at any time you feel bogged down or confused, feel free to let us know and we can back up a little bit. A bit of background information, if there are some new members in the audience or new members watching at home, Lakeview Industries is currently in Chaska and they've been in business for over 30 years. They manufacture and fabricate flexible components, including gas cut, gaskets, die cuts, molded rubber parts. The city staff's newest favorite word is extrusions, weather stripping, and they serve markets including medical, recreational, agricultural, construction, so on and so forth. They have several, uh, top customers that are listed on their website. Ones that I thought might have some good name recognition include Penn Terr, Medtronic, Bobcat, Toro, Polaris, and Fasinal. There are 90 jobs anticipated at the Carver facility, and again, the planning commission reviewed the concept plan at the July 19th meeting. At a staff level and with the mayor, we are able to tour the Lakeview Industries site, so we are able to see some of these things that we've seen on paper several times, in person, get to know the building a little bit better, uh, drive up to it, see what it's like in context with other buildings, smell the smells, see the sights, hear the sounds. So if you have specific questions related to that, there are members from the development team and Lakeview, otherwise staff and the mayor have had an opportunity to tour the facility as well. If you'll remember, this is the concept plan that we reviewed at the July 19th meeting. Uh, now at the preliminary plat stage, probably the biggest thing to note is the building size has increased. So at the concept level, we continually were saying the 143,000 square feet. The size of the building number one, which is the first phase of development, is now 154,400 square feet, so a pretty significant increase in the square footage. Again, we are just talking about building one, which will be phase one of the development. There is a future phase two, which is the building expansion, which is the additional space on building one, and then a future construction of building two. So the dates of the next two phases have not been determined, but Lakeview would like the opportunity to come forward when they're ready to expand into additional space. Some context about where we are talking about, if people are new to the project, and this project, the property was annexed with the Mills addition, so it's just north of Mills on Levi Griffin Road, near Carver's Water Tower. So the Water Tower is a pretty good landmark to think about when you're thinking about this project. So when the property was annexed with the Mills property, it's automatically given the designation of agriculture until there is a user for the site determined. So since there's now a user for the site, we are proposing a rezoning from agricultural to industrial. How this relates to our comprehensive plan, which guides property throughout the city of Carver, I have both the 2030 comprehensive plan map that we're operating under today, along with the drafted 2040 land use map. So in the 2040, it's where the lines are striped with orange and white, and the property was guided as a mix of commercial and industrial. In the drafted 2040 plan, we have moved to an industrial user. So Lakeview as a use does meet the specifications of the 2030 comprehensive plan, so no comprehensive plan amendment is required, it's just the rezoning request. Moving into some details of the preliminary plat, if you think about some of the preliminary plats that we review as a group, this one is probably a little bit less complicated than some of the work that we do compared to the major subdivisions that we're working on, where we need to think closely about lot sizes and number of lots and how the park can serve a community and more of that residential feel. So the preliminary plat for this project, uh, is just the first phase, the first building, it will determine that property line that will allow for development. So it's lot one, block one. It runs along Levi Griffin Road, so the project will essentially track along that space. It's also been indicated by the development team that they will likely have a tenant in building one for a bit as they move their processes over to the city of Carver, so there could be a, a second user in that space. As part of the user identification of that project, they would need to meet the specifications of the city code. So it wouldn't be able to be a user that's not similar in type, so it would need to be industrial if the property is rezoned industrial. So something that I always find pretty interesting is landscaping as part of the development plan. So you'll see throughout the entire site, there are existing trees along Levi Griffin Road in the Boulevard right now. With the Lakeview project, it is anticipated that those trees will hopefully stay, but if not, they will likely be replaced if something happens during construction. And then there's a lot of significant plantings that surround the building, so bringing the industrial feel of a building down to a more user-friendly level with some plantings at the foundation to break up space, make it feel a little bit warmer, since it will be next to a commercial user of Fleet Farm. I'm gonna keep going, I'm not gonna let you go yet. So as part of the packet tonight, there was some resident feedback that was included, so there was an email from a property owner, along with a response, and then the information that I provided at the beginning of the meeting stating that there was an additional email... that I provided at the beginning of the meeting stating that there was an additional email that should be added to public record, was a response from the president of Lakeview addressing some of the concerns and comments. At a staff level, we have had the opportunity to meet with three property owners that are along the Creek Ridge Road, so just north of this development, currently in Dogren Township, that will likely be neighbors of Lakeview, so we've been able to have discussions with them, talk through some concerns, comments, work through some kinks that they have heard, things that seem... that can seem pretty scary when you get a piece of paper saying that something is going to be rezoned and re-guided, and all of the technical planning work that we do. So, I anticipate that there might be some comment during the public hearing, but I would also note that information is provided in the packet as well. So that's where I'm going to stop now for rezoning and preliminary plat. I would suggest that we maybe discuss those things first before we move into TIF, if
This is just kind of an overview question, but in regards to your meetings that you've had with the neighbors, overall, how did you feel that the outcome of those meetings turned out?
Sure. So the meetings that we've had, generally, we try to provide quite a bit of information that is sometimes hard. It's hard to sit down and understand how the comprehensive plan meets zoning and land use and the work that we do. Generally speaking, for me personally, I feel like they went really well, I feel like we've built some relationships with neighboring property owners that will someday likely be part of the city of Carver, so that's my personal opinion, I hope that the property owners can say the same thing, that they walked away feeling like they had good information and understood the mechanisms that we have to both control the safety of the site and also the land use and planning.
Great. Good. Thank you.
You mentioned that the first building size change grew in size.
It did.
Did it grow in size east to west or north to south, from the previous one that we had seen?
Yep. So, it grew east to west.
Okay.
So, we don't have the pretty rendering of it necessarily.
Right.
But it goes farther along Levi Griffin Road than this picture depicts.
And were there always those two access points on Levi Griffith Road to the parking lot? And the... this is the previous...
It is.
...concept that we saw. Okay, so they were on there, okay.
Yes, and we're working through that right now at a staff level, so Levi Griffin, when I talked about Sixth Street West, it's also a collector.
Yeah.
So, we're working through limiting the amount of accesses onto Levi Griffin, so I anticipate by the time final plat comes in, the accessing is going to look a little bit different.
Okay.
As our engineers have worked together to figure out how not only cars can access the site, but also trucks, which is interesting.
Yeah, because I think we, you know, we... in the concept plan, right, we had the... whatever the road is going to be to the east of this facility would be the area that the trucks would get on, because the sort of the loading docks and everything is on the backside of the building or between the two buildings. And we liked that concept of having them kind of go in between the buildings so that neighbors weren't exposed, I guess, to the loading dock areas, kind of thing, so it's kind of a little bit protected, we liked that.
And as part of this project, there will be a north-south road constructed on the east property line, Commerce Drive is the proposed name for the street, that will provide truck access into the site. It also is a great opportunity for the city to begin recognizing that some of those properties north of Fleet Farm may begin to develop, and access is going to be important, so having some future planning instead of reactive when someone comes in for a street.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Okay.
I don't have any questions or comments, just because we... there's that much change other than the size.
Madam Chair, if I could make a comment. So, in our... there was a letter from a resident that was included in our packets, and I just appreciate the concern expressed specifically as it relates to environment and health, the health and welfare of the public. I would just like to say, for those of us who may be here with us this evening and watching on television, that a lot of the same concerns that were expressed in this letter were raised by the Planning Commission, specifically as it relates to environment, so at that time, I feel like the representative of the company did a good job in addressing those concerns, and I appreciate the additional correspondence that was provided by the president of the company to address the specifics that were related in there, that just continues to validate that... that the company also is a good environmental steward, just like we want to be good environmental stewards of our land and our community, and I see that in that response. So, I thank our resident for raising those concerns, and the company for responding to those in a timely manner for the commission to take into consideration.
I just have a clarification question on zoning. And so when we zone something strictly industrial, and then we have other items zoned commercial/ industrial, that gives us the flexibility, right, to go commercial or industrial?
So, that would be guided in the comprehensive plan?
Right.
So we can't zone something as a mix of commercial or industrial, but we can guide it? So, it could either be a commercial user that comes in, or an industrial user, and we could entertain the planning process with either. So, it's not specific zoning, it's the guidance that allows us that flexibility.
Okay, so if we move forward guiding this industrial?
We're rezoning.
Zoning, right, okay. So when we rezone industrial, then we have... we don't have any options outside of that?
Correct.
We have options to rezone, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not trying to sound negative, like, but in case this plan didn't work?
Sure.
I mean, when we look at our comprehensive plan, and we look at different areas that we're guiding either-or, I mean, right? We're guiding them either-or.
Correct.
Okay.
So something else to think about, too, in our preliminary plat resolution, we generally have a date that a final plat needs to be applied for, too. So, if something were to happen with any developer, we have kind of an end date where they have a window to finish the planning process. If it closes, then we have the opportunity to readdress the property.
To readdress the zoning aspect of it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say, from what I've seen, I think the use that's being proposed here and that what's coming, it actually fits very well with our comprehensive plan and the discussions that we've had. As we look at maybe the whole area, that area is a larger whole, right, a region within the city, you've got commercial, and then you've got this light industrial use, and then it continues with the heavier industrial use. I really think that the use fits well there, and that the proposal is a good project for the city.
Madam Chair, I'm realizing I don't have the site plan included in my PowerPoint, so I'm going to navigate out of my PowerPoint quick so it can be reflected on the screen.
Sure.
My desktop is really stressful to a lot of people, so don't look at it. Oh, good, you won't have to. This is probably quite helpful, so sorry that wasn't in my PowerPoint, but I'd like to include it as we continue discussion, so, building two. And here's the clearer layout of the site.
I don't have any other comments, do you?
No, I don't. Are we supposed to open a public hearing?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're going to proceed with opening the public hearing now.
Right.
We will now open a public hearing on this. If anybody out there has any comments, we'd like you to come forward, please. Hi there.
Hi.
So if you can give us your name and your address?
Chris Claus, live on Creek Ridge Lane. Our main concern is echoed in that letter as well with the environmental concerns. The public water tower is there, as well as all of our private wealth, so we are concerned about the environmental impacts that this will have. So, also, as per the previous discussion of lighting, we are concerned about the lighting from this into the laborhood, and also the extension of the road. Is there any intention of that intersecting with Creek Ridge Lane?
Which road do you mean? I'm sorry. Levi Griffin?
The extension of the road that is planned, running north-south, is there any intention of that intersecting with Creek Ridge Lane?
Erin, can you pull up a map there?
Yeah.
Is that where you're going to... Right, but you're worried about, your road runs east-west, right?
It is a...
This road's running northeast.
It comes down.
I mean, north-south.
Yeah.
Can you comment on that, please?
I can, yes. So this is likely a little bit confusing, it's rotated a bit odd, so Levi Griffin is on the right side of the screen, so it's essentially flipped. So as part of this development, the construction of Commerce is not anticipated to connect with Creek Ridge. Did I go completely upside down? I shouldn't talk and rotate at the same time.
One more time.
One more time. There we go.
There you go.
So, Levi Griffin is at the bottom of the screen, Lakeview is here, Creek Ridge is kind of this boomerang shape that goes along the screen here. So you'll see the extension of Dewalter, which we're calling Commerce Drive for the extension of this project, does not intersect with Creek Ridge Drive, Creek Ridge Lane, I'm sorry. Part of development of this project, we batted it around a little bit, thinking, would it be good access for the site, but knowing the condition of the street and the type of users that are on the seat... on the street, it's gravel, largely residential, quiet, we felt like it was in the best intention of this project and the residents to not extend to Creek Ridge. So, there is opportunity, maybe someday, yes, we might move north-south onto Creek Ridge, but it's not anticipated with this project.
And one final comment, I know that building two is not planned at this time, but I would like to request that we consider putting some sort of trees or other landscaping on the backside of that property.
No doubt. Absolutely. We'd agree with that.
We would all... I shouldn't speak for all of us, but I'm thinking we would all second that easily, from a priority standpoint, too. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would just say, I think I brought up the comment at the last time, that because of the proximity of the parking lot to the wetlands, my concern was to preserve the integrity of the wetland and manage the runoff in the most efficient and effective way possible. And there wasn't much done... Phase two buildings, and understanding that's future phase two, doesn't look like there was much work done on that, but we... I know staff did note that, we saw that in the minutes from our last meeting, but that is a shared concern by the entire commission.
Yeah, and that is a big concern as well, because of the topography of the area, all runoff will be towards Creek Ridge downhill.
Do you have any other comments to share about the topography aspect of that?
Sure. So through permitting of the watershed district, projects aren't able to add any runoff capacity, so the property needs to maintain either the amount of runoff that they currently have or less. No project that's permitted can add to that system, so adding a parking lot in a building cannot add to the runoff of a property, so a lot of those concerns are tackled through the wetland permitting process, it's very much a valid concern, but it is a process that is formal and permitted, and largely, no additional runoff can be added.
That's to stay neutral, basically.
Correct. Neutral or better.
Okay. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, before you maybe take other comment, I just have a staff question as a follow-up.
Should we close the hearing first, or just move forward with this?
No.
Okay, good, okay.
I just have a follow-up question as it relates to... as it relates to water, maybe if staff could comment, I know that the state requires testing on water, certain level of contaminants, that that's done on a regular basis, I don't know if you just have any information that you could share that would maybe help... help us understand better what those requirements are.
So when a development is put in, there are stormwater ponds generally that are managed by the city, so we typically get a drainage and utility easement over any stormwater ponds, which then falls to us for maintenance testing. So these ponds would be like any other pond within the city, we do regular maintenance testing, it does enter our maintenance schedule as well, so these ponds, they don't need a ton of attention unless something is off in the amount of bacteria that might be in the pond. Typically, they have a lifespan of maintenance of about 20 years, so the ponds, when they're added to this property, will be part of the city system, so it allows us to keep a closer eye on it, to monitor them, provide the care that they need so they stay in good shape.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further public comments, please come forward. Hello, if you can give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Mark Lonell, and I live at 1815 Levi Griffin Road in Carver, used to be Chaska. Interesting, this whole discussion, it was interesting, I'm a little bit disappointed, I guess, I didn't hear from the city planner when she was talking about her discussions with the neighbors, and that it appeared that the neighbors seemed to be fine with it. And I remember having a very detailed discussion with her, stating that I was not fine with this. Just a little bit of a history lesson, and Mr. Wagon was there, so you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, and Ms. McKnight, you were perhaps here 10 years ago as well, when all of the development north of 212 was being discussed at that time, annexation agreements and so forth at that time, I had the unique opportunity, having owned the property in the northwest corner of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Highway 212, is that I could have annexed into the city of Chaska, which would have brought all of the land north of 212 going Chaska Way, or I could have annexed into the city of Carver. Well, discussions with both cities at the time is looking what would be best for Mark Lonell and for my property. At the same time, is I had put out letters to prospective buyers for my property, and one of those buyers was an entity by the name of Mills Fleet Farm. Mills Fleet Farm and myself went into an agreement in principle back in about 2000... just after the freeway was announced that it was going to be built, 2006, I think, or so, or 2007, I'm not remembering exactly that. But anyway, is negotiating with Chaska, Chaska was willing to annex me and the property north of Highway 212 into the city of Chaska, but I liked the idea of what I was hearing from the city of Carver at the time, so what I did was, I threw my hat into the ring with the city of Carver. The city of Carver established what was called the Freeway Commercial District, the primary 300 acres of that freeway, commercial, and I'm... The primary 300 acres of that freeway commercial, and I emphasize "commercial," district was my property, the Peterson property north of me, the Mills property, and on the south side of 212, where it would have been the former Worm Farm, where the Polat family, I believe, owns the corner, and D.R. Horton is talking about some property or some development on that property. So when I, when I hear that the Freeway Commercial District is about 100 acres of it, the 40-some acres of the Mills property is no longer gonna be commercial, that it's gonna become industrial, that was not the discussion and the concept plan that was put into place back 10 years ago, when it was decided that property north of Highway 212 would possibly go into an annexation agreement with the city of Carver. I'm disappointed to hear also that you're putting perhaps residential, the D.R. Horton, on the south side of Highway 212. For two reasons. One, again, you're taking some 40 or 50 or 60 acres out of the freeway commercial, I'll keep emphasizing, "commercial" district. Also, as I live very close to that intersection and are disgusted with the semi-traffic that exits onto Jonathan Carver Parkway, the noise there, any housing that goes near that intersection, you folks or the city is gonna hear complaints about that. That is gonna be an ongoing issue in the, in the future. But getting back to the property north, I'm sure that Lakeview Industries is a wonderful company and will be a welcome addition to the city of Carver. This is not the right location for it. I think, as many of you know, or some of you know, is after the Mills property, my deal with Mills property fell through, because what happened was, the intersection for Highway 212 moved. Originally, that intersection was to be built, what would be in the city of Chaska. It was moved to the original location where it is now. The original location, I lost none of my property. I had enough property for Mills. The new intersection location took a significant amount of my property away for the freeway. I didn't have enough property. I helped Mills, I introduced them to my neighbors, the Close family, they bought that 90-some acres and built a store there. To reinforce the Freeway Commercial District agreement, back in 2010, when Mills wanted to build, and you needed a road in, Levi Griffin Road, is that was my driveway before. So I had to do was sacrifice my driveway, sacrifice my style of living. 85 trees, mature trees, were taken out of my property in order for Levi Griffin Road to go in. I was assured by the city, let us build this road, and Walmart will be back. I was under contract with Walmart after I was under contract with Mills. Walmart was coming to the, to the city of Carver. Unfortunately, what happened was, the economy took a turn, and Walmart backed off. I still in discussions with them. They still like the site where I'm at. I can almost assuredly tell you that if you're gonna take 100 acres out of the Freeway Commercial District, Commercial District, and put in industrial and put in housing, Walmart's gonna look at it and say, wait a minute, we like to be around amongst big box stores. Where are you gonna put big box stores when you start ripping out the Freeway Commercial, the heart of it, with uses that were not planned back 10 years ago? So I respectfully ask you to reconsider this penny-wise and pound-foolish decision to put an industrial use in the Freeway Commercial District. Jim, was anything wrong in my collection?
First of all, Mills could not have built if you had been annexed by Chaska, because Chaska was unable to supply water and sewer. The only way Mills could have been built on your property is if you were annexed by Carver. How many commercial buildings do you see in that commercial district today?
The Mills property?
That's it.
Yeah.
We've been trying to get other commercial property in there, and it's not there because they didn't wanna build. I mean, you can say what you want, you can lay out, wait a minute, it's my turn to talk. You can lay out plans for anything. However, plans are not necessarily gonna turn into reality. And we would have liked to seen things develop differently than they have, but they haven't. And sometimes you have to change the plans.
You know, I look, I look at the decision that was made 10 years ago that I made, and whether I should have annexed into the city of Chaska or the city of Carver. I see Chaska, you know, continuing to develop down along the freeway. They're now putting an intersection in at County Road 140. They're gonna have commercial development there. I feel assuredly that if this, if I would have annexed into the city of Chaska, that the city of Chaska would then have had, had this prime location, and that they would have developed something. And quite frankly, even if they wouldn't have, I'd be in the same situation I am now with property that's not sold. And quite frankly, I'd be better off if Mills was not there. If I had my driveway back, my trees back, and my residents back the way it was.
I, you know, I can't respond to that. But I will tell you, there's a facility in Chaska, across County Road 11, from you, that gets its utilities from Carver, not from Chaska.
And I understand that.
So, I mean, the reality, the proposal that you could have been annexed by Chaska and Mills had built the property is not true.
The city of Chaska would not have allowed the state to build that facility. They let the, the state build that facility there because they felt that would be a negative detractor to the city of Carver.
All I'm saying is, Chaska could not have annexed your property because they could not supply the utilities that would have been needed for Mills.
But if they would have had control of the entire, of the, of the intersection, including my property, they would have made, I think, an ability to bring water and sewer there. And maybe it would have taken a little bit longer. Now, I feel is, is with the decision that the city is making, in that you're ripping apart the Freeway Commercial District, and with allowing Chaska to now put an intersection in, not fighting that to the degree that you should have, is that development's gonna happen there, that development here has been pushed back another five years. Again, I just feel that it's penny-wise, pound-foolish. Someday, city of Carver, I think, can be the size of Chaska or Tannhaston, or even larger, with the annexation area you have to work with. This is the prime area that you have for commercial development. And what you're doing is, you're ripping 100 acres out of it. You're settling for uses that are not in the best interest, I believe, for the city of Carver.
I, I think that, I think, well, we should not kinda get into this argument here. You certainly have an opinion. I personally think this is good for Carver. I think it's gonna bring better jobs into the Carver area and better tax return for Carver than commercial would. But we can all have our different views.
I'd agree. I mean, I've been, as you mentioned, I've been here a long time, and I, you know, I was part of 2008 Comprehensive Plan, or when we did it in 2008, working for 2030. I've also worked on this Comprehensive Plan that we're considering for 2040. Things have changed a lot since I've lived here. I mean, we thought that intersection was gonna be completely different than what it's actually shaping up today. You know, at the time, I think that we did think that that was gonna be a fantastic commercial district. We had a lot of high hopes for Fleet Farm, for Walmart, for other commercial. But then, again, as you mentioned, the economy completely changed. We also got a school. We got a park and ride. We got a lot of other different things near that intersection that we didn't know about 10 years ago. And so, you know, I know a lot of effort has been put into where we think we wanna go next in the 2040 Plan. We've spent a lot of time trying to figure out where those right areas are for commercial, for industrial. We've also seen Chaska and how they're developing as well, and kind of how we wanna line up with them. It's a fresh look, and as Jim said, plans change, things change. You know, I think Carver is developing a little bit differently than we thought it would 15 years ago. That's okay. And bringing industrial to this site helps bring us daytime jobs that we just don't have in this community today, which is one of the biggest drivers for commercial that everybody's asking for. So we just don't have a lot of that. I mean, even the last development we talked about brings daytime jobs to our city, so.
And I won't argue that.
Yeah, so I just expressed.
That it's not good for the city of Carver. My argument is, this is not the right location.
Fair enough. We can agree to it.
What's gonna happen is, the economy got nailed back in 2008. It's coming back now. I think what's gonna happen is, it might be a year from now or five years from now, you're gonna regret the decision when you wish that you had a Freeway Commercial District. If Walmart comes out this way, if Costco comes out this way. Again, I'm fairly confident Walmart will look at the decision that you're making with the housing on the south side and light industrial, or industrial on the, on the north side, taking a huge chunk of the Freeway Commercial District. They will look at it and say, that site does not fit our needs any longer. And they'll move, they'll go somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I can't speculate, but I appreciate your perspective and your history and your viewpoint. I just, I'm gonna.
All I'm saying is, decisions you're making today are negatively impacting some of us who gave up a lot to help drive that intersection and drive that territory to become Carver 10 years ago.
Understand.
And I've got a question about drainage. It's talked about that, that industry comes in and no additional, whatever water is created on that site has to be retained on that site, all of it, or even more of it than it was before. Does that hold true for streets as well? I'm finding out.
I, I think what we can do, Mr. Lonell, is we can arrange a meeting with you and the city engineer. I don't think anyone here is qualified to start speculating on drainage patterns for city streets. But I'll connect with you tomorrow. We can set up a meeting with the city engineer.
Yeah, I just, yeah, and I have another thing.
Is it particular to the content of what we're speaking about?
Adding Dewalter Road to the infrastructure of Levi Griffin and the existing Dewalter Road is, I'm finding out now how naive I perhaps was 10 years ago. Levi Griffin Road is built, Dewalter Road is built, there's no retention pond for the hundreds or thousands of square feet of asphalt there. That dumps on my property.
There'll be, there'll be onsite retention ponds on the Lakeview property. There's onsite retention on the Fleet Farm property. And then once it leaves the retention pond, it goes through conveyance through a series of stormwater pipes. So actually, none of that water should be hitting your property.
Hmm, interesting. When there's a big rain, there's a culvert at the end of Dewalter that dumps on my property.
Let's set up a meeting with the city engineer, Mr. Lonell.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a response question to Mr. Lonell. Where would you suggest this Lakeview Industries move their headquarters within Carver?
Extend Levi Griffin Road west.
Looking at my map.
And go behind Fleet Farm. Go outside of what was the Freeway Commercial District. You have to build infrastructure for Dewalter Road going north. Just extend Levi Griffin Road going west. Preserve the Freeway Commercial District. You have a wonderful site for them, very similar to the site that, that there is now. Just go west on Levi, Levi Griffin.
I just have a clarifying question, too, from a historical standpoint, because I certainly wasn't around at that point. On the land use map, that, not the one we're working on, but back at that date, I mean, what was, what was that designated, that space? Because on the map I'm looking at, it looks like commercial-industrial.
Correct.
Right?
So this.
So it's not any different, we're not, it wasn't, it's not any different back then than it is now?
In the 2030 Plan, oh, sorry. You're right. I'm gonna do one of those. It's right there.
Correct. There's no change in land use guidance.
Okay.
That we're considering here, that wasn't, that wasn't, correct. So our 2030 Comprehensive Plan that we did in 2008, it was exactly the same.
So are you understanding what I'm saying? Because I'm just trying to, I'm just looking at it from a continuity or consistency standpoint. It looked like at one time, you know, a group of people really worked to see if that was accurate for that time. Knowing that no Fleet Farm was coming in.
Being more educated now than I was then, is with the guidance of the industrial/commercial gave you guys some flexibility. But if you look at all of your marketing material, from 2010 to, I don't, to recently, marketing material for the Freeway Commercial District, and you look at the property that's identified, that property is identified as being part of the Freeway Commercial District.
Can you clarify on that a little bit?
Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Yes.
At the risk of making this public hearing a debate, I think I have some information that can shed some light on some of Mr. Lonell's concerns. Obviously, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan had a, a lot of commercial property. And at, at the time, I think Mr. Lonell, even though I wasn't here, I think former Mayor Wagen can attest and Commissioner McKnight, that there was an excitement related to the opportunities for Freeway Commercial. And I can speak to the Freeway Commercial, because I coined the term Freeway Commercial District. With all due respect to Mr. Lonell's comments, it's, it wasn't an official planning document of the city. It was a kitschy way for me to try to coin to build interest and, and give it a label to an area that frankly had been struggling since we had the Fleet Farm piece. But I think the, the change, and I've spoken to Mr. Lonell about this, and it's kind of similar to the conversation. It's an agree to disagree, but I, I do have some background in that we've spoken to the developer, the leads with United Properties prior to the development of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And, you know, their comment was akin to, our eyes are bigger than our stomachs as far as we just have enough retail commercial to last us for 100 years. And so we can decide to wait for 100 years to get, you know, not just one big box, but we're looking at with the amount of property, you know, five or six big boxes. You know, and there's folks that probably could speak to the, the areas of the number of big boxes that are going up. And so I would contend at the risk of elongating a debate in maybe an improper forum that, you know, not 100 acres, but this 40 acres that's being taken out is going to make Mr. Lonell's property all the more likely to be developed for retail because there's less retail. It's a, you know, a simple supply and demand piece. There's, there's less retail. The, you know, the Mezurlee Kramer folks and the United Properties folks both agreed that that corner on the southwest quadrant of 212 and 11 had so much commercial that they were just going to lose out. And it was never gonna develop, but not only in their lifetimes, but other folks' lifetimes. So I, I, I respect and I admire Mr. Lonell's attention to detail and how involved he's been with the development of the property. He's been a great steward to the community, and I can appreciate a concern, because I don't think any of us know for sure, but a concern that maybe a longstanding relationship and an ongoing relationship with Walmart may be in jeopardy with Lakeview building. But I would, I, as I told Mr. Lonell before, and I would say again tonight, I respectfully disagree that the elementary school was probably one of the best things that could have happened to this community. Not only from like the youth and education standpoint, but the ability to spur on development. And that has happened on the south side of 212. We all thought that that was gonna. We all thought that that was going to happen with Mills Fleet Farm. I had a conversation along with the mayor about six months ago with the vice president of real estate with Costco. And he said, "We don't build next to farm fields. We build next to other developments. We build in the middle of neighborhoods. We build, build in the, in all-around buildings. We want to be hard to get to because people don't just drive past Costco. They go to Costco. They know where it is, even if it's hard to get to." So, I would contend that Lakeview's building and their impact, with all due respect to Fleet Farm, they're going to have a, the building is going to be phenomenal. It's going to have daytime population. And so, the number one point of feedback that I get from residents is, "We want a sit-down restaurant." Well, when 95% of your population leaves the city during the day to go to work, you know, Applebee's or Chili's or Buffalo Wild Wings, or as council member Henry would like, Old Country Buffet, isn't going to seat enough people, you know, with a... I'm sorry, but I can't hide my excitement about this project. I think it's going to be fantastic for Carver. And I pledge to work with Mr. Lano and the other neighbors if there's concerns about how it may impact their property to do that. That's our responsibility to them and to all of you. And I have to, I have to say that... To imply that you were in support of this project. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, for me personally, just learning that, you know, the supply and demand aspect of all of this process, it was an understanding that I had to work on. Because if we could just pick, you know, what we want and where we want it, that'd be fabulous.
Do I get paid for educating?
Absolutely.
You get twice my salary.
So, do we have any other comments to share right now?
Anyway, my two cents, so.
Yeah, thank you for your time and the history lesson.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Any other comments? Hello, if you can give us your name and...
Good evening. My name is Ron Meyer. I live at 12040 Creek Ridge Lane. First of all, I want to thank the Carver staff for taking time. My wife had an opportunity to sit down with them and chat and get a lot of information about this project a couple of days ago. And I appreciate the time that they took. She was pleased with the conversation. I think it was portrayed correctly in terms of, it was a positive experience. I think both her and I still have some concerns that I'd like to express this evening to the council. Couple of things I just think are still a little bit up in the air from my perspective that I haven't heard for certainty that this is what we're going to experience as neighbors to this project. Specifically, in the email that we did receive from the Lakeview president, which we appreciate getting that feedback today, they talked a little bit about some of our pollution concerns. And I think it's been addressed by others that we do have well water on our property. And so, certainly, we are very conscious of what is going into the soil, what is going into the water source for us. The president today in the email did comment that currently, they don't have, they don't mold or extrude at the current facilities, which I don't have any clue what that means. It sounds important, though.
I can, I can try to help clarify. I work in capital equipment and a lot of manufacturing and extrusion and molding. And I did ask some of these questions when they came with the, with the concept plan to understand what types of equipment that they use so that I could get a sense of what chemicals, what materials they would have, what types of processes. Do they have exhausts or something like that as part of their process that would then need to be cleaned before coming out into our neighborly air or water or whatever? And so, I think his, what was, my interpretation of his response is there are chemicals that are used in molding and extrusion. But they don't do that at this facility. So, they're taking materials that are already molded and extruded and adding them to other materials that are not using those types of chemicals. Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense. My question, I think, is, at least in terms of how I interpreted the email, is that that's not currently done in the current facilities. My question is, is Lakeview committing that that's not going to be done in the future in either this first phase or the second phase down the road? Because that certainly would be a concern that I would have. The second thing, and it's the first time that I heard it, was tonight, is that there is going to be a temporary tenant in that first facility as they move. And so, my question is whether or not those tenants are committed to the same things in terms of pollution and some of the other concerns that we've addressed that Lakeview has responded to in what I've heard that it's been a satisfactory way. And so, what are they going to be responsible for? The other thing in the email addressed the truck traffic. And it said that the majority of trucks come and go from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I'm wondering what majority means. Is that 51%? And, or, and when is the rest of those trucks going to be operating? Is it going to be at 8:00 o'clock at night, at 10:00 o'clock at night? Is it a 24-hour truck traffic for that? And the last point that I think that I would like to make, my wife and I actually just recently moved to this house back in March. We looked for over a year for a spot that we can move our family that got us kind of out of the city life and into the country a little bit, and that we can enjoy some peace and quiet and still be very close. We love the area. It's exactly what we are looking for. And so, one of the things that I heard with the first order of business this evening was someone mentioned the idea of being a good neighbor. And so, the thing that I'd like to just throw out there is the importance that I believe if this moves forward and what is the value for being a good neighbor for those residents that live on Creek Road or Creek Ridge Lane. We talked about it earlier about whether there's going to be trees that are planted. But I just want to make sure that that value is the same for this project and for our neighborhood that it is for the other neighborhoods that were affected from the first plan this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you want to come on up?
That'd be great.
My name is John Schwanki. I'm the president of Lakeview Industries. Thank you for putting us on the plan tonight, and I'm happy that this is moving forward. We've spent a lot of time with the city Carver to date, with a lot of architects, with builders, myself personally spending time for the last two years looking for property to relocate our entire facility. The last question that the previous gentleman had asked was about, you know, beautification essentially of the property. Part of the challenge that we've had recently with submitting a final plan to the city is the location of Dewalter Road. And it has been brought to my attention about a week and a half to two weeks ago, I was asked whether I was okay with the road being moved 30 to 40 feet onto the property that I'm intending to purchase. And would that impact the size of our building and that we would have to move it to the west to account for the fact that there's a large grove of trees on the east side of where that road will go, to which my comment was absolutely move the road. I want to look at those trees. Our office area is going to look east, and we'll be looking directly at the trees that would be east of Dewalter Road. And yes, it does potentially change the fact that we're going to run into wetland areas by doing that. That may cost us additional money to do that. I was not really concerned about that at the time. My concern was, I want to save some trees. But also, the concern I had was, well, what happens if the new property owner who buys an acreage to our east decides they don't want those trees? And they could potentially take those trees down because that property is not in the city of Carver right now. It's in Dulgren Township. So, we're paying to build a road, move the building west 30 to 40 feet, and could see those trees come down with whomever chooses to buy that property. So, we are very concerned about the beautification of this property. Aaron put up a small little map showing an aerial view of the building, the landscaping and so forth. We're coming from a property that is currently located on Hazeltine Lake. The name Lakeview was created in 1990 when we moved into the current building that we're in due to the fact that the city had named the street Lakeview Drive. We were currently three different companies at that time, and we decided to remarket our company and chose the name Lakeview Industries. We're going to greatly miss the view that we get of that lake. And the current ownership is very disheartened that we have been successful at growth, that now we've got to move our building. In regards to truck hours, I responded with generally 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the logistics world most receiving takes place in the a.m. hours. So, trucks leave early in the morning from wherever their headquarters hubs are, and they deliver product that was, that is currently, as we speak, being delivered to those hubs. We receive product in the morning hours. It's rarely ever before 8:00. It could happen, but it doesn't. And we generally ship between the hours of noon and 5:00 p.m. And again, that's determined primarily by the logistics companies, which we refer to our customers because they direct when their trucks are going to arrive at our facility. So, there are occasions to the question, is that 80%, 70%? That's probably about 95% would operate during those hours. There are occasions when a truck may arrive at 5:30 or 6:00 p.m., but it would have to be under special conditions. Our receiving department generally closes at about 5:00 p.m., so it could happen. Regarding extruding and molding of products, at one point in time, we molded rubber in Chaska. And then, from about 1992 until about 1998, we could no longer compete against low-cost countries from that point forth. It forced us to create partnerships with molding facilities in low-cost countries, which could be Taiwan, China, Vietnam, Korea, et cetera. We currently have all of our rubber molding done in those countries. We import everything that we sell that's molded, including plastic. Extruding is also done in those countries, but primarily done in the United States. So, we do not extrude in our facility. We have no plans to extrude in our facility. We have no experience of ever extruding. So, this facility is designed for fabrication and for storage. We're going to utilize approximately 100,000 feet. The initial tenant will be Lakeview Industries. When this building's complete, we move everything lock, stock and barrel into this building. We will idle the facilities that we own in Chaska. We're also leasing a facility in Chaska and move everything into this building. The initial space of 144,000 feet, we're expecting to lease out anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 feet to help subsidize the cost of the facility and space that we currently don't need. The tenant would have to basically meet my standards of who I want in that facility, which means I'm not going to lease the building to somebody. I don't want to be breathing the air, hearing the sounds and making all the mess of our property. So, we will dictate who leases that space, and if we can't find a proper tenant, then I won't lease it. It's not going to be a manufacturing company. Most manufacturing, most manufacturing companies want to lease space for five to 10 years. I'm only going to have tenants that are going to be in there for one to two years before I need that space. Did I cover all the questions?
I think the end comment was really just about being a good neighbor, you know, how we, how we define being a good neighbor. So, I think you answered.
Mr. Schwanki, could you speak to concerns both spoken tonight and by email regarding water quality? And what, if anything, you admit, either by air or water or waste for your facility?
Currently, we do water jet cutting, which is using high-pressure water to cut through thin materials primarily. Sometimes it's foam. That water gets reclaimed, re-chilled and used again in the equipment. The material that is left behind at the bottom of the tank gets pumped out about once every four months by a facility that specializes in the removal of that waste. None of that waste is considered hazardous. If we wanted to, we could just pump it out into a cooling tank or a holding area in our facility and then throw it into the garbage, and that would be considered acceptable. But we choose not to do that, we have it pumped and removed by a company that specializes in doing that.
And the company takes the material when they do that?
Yeah, it's essentially just the byproduct of when you cut through rubber and foam, it, there's a little bit of, almost like a clay-like material that it leaves behind. The water itself, we have absolutely no disposable of any water other than normal sanitary operation within our business. We don't have any chemicals that are being flushed down the drain. We don't have any byproducts from the die-cutting, slitting and light-assembly work that we do. So, there is no hazardous output. And I work there every day, so I don't want it either.
Right.
As none of our employees do.
So, I assume that when we see a prelim, or a final plaque, right? Because this is just preliminary plaque. When we see a final plaque, we'll probably see a little bit more details. It'll be a finalized landscape plan. We'll see a lighting plan. We'll see all of those further details. And then, obviously, as the Lot 2, whatever the back building will be called, we'll see all of those details and hear about the concerns, especially the buffering against the adjacent neighbors to the north. We'll be able to see all of those details as well, right?
Correct. So, part of this process right now is just building one, though. So, building two might be in two years. It could be in 10. But at that time, we'll get the same level of detail.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the history and the tree story. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Meaningful. Yes. Would you like to come up next?
At this point, we're not having looked at what we put along the north side of the property that I'm aware of. I don't really know, based on topography, how much of the building you'll be able to see from the north side. There's quite an elevation change from the south edge to the north. So, I'm not even certain what that would be as far as height, you know, how much you're going to be able to see from that road.
Excuse me, madam chair. Just because we have folks on TV, if residents want to speak, they should come to the microphone just so folks can hear your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you step up, please? Okay. How can we accommodate you?
I can ask the question.
Yes, go ahead.
Talk loud.
We'll repeat the question.
Yep. Yep.
The thing I have about the tree, when you go to apartment buildings and pass it down from the fire all the way, big old trees there, and I remember they died because of construction and stress. And now, I live on Donovan Parkway, maybe it's on Row Eleven, and that old tree that was there all my life is dying, you know, since they redid that. So, I just wanted to hear what you, with the quarter road there, it isn't going to say that trees are going to live. They're going to be dead. Um, that's from construction, construction. I'll argue that we need some, once they redid trees there, we want, uh, what it's worth, what it's all worth. I don't weigh any of that much for your, but I'm going to say, you know, that's what I mean, for you down the road there, I mean, you know, I'll give a roll over it, but please don't worry, see, that tree died either.
Okay, so, just to kind of circle back around for everybody online, where there's having a conversation regarding the ability to save trees secondary to construction stress and the possibility of managing that moving forward. Thank you for your comment on that. Appreciate it. That's sad. Nobody wants that as an outcome, by the way, so. Hello, if you can tell us your name and where you reside?
Yes. Hi, my name is Shelley Coonan. I reside at one-two-zero-seven-five Creek Ridge Lane. I've already submitted a written statement that counts. Some of the members of the planning commission were kind enough to meet with several of us this meet, this week. We had a lot of questions, because our first encounter with what was going to happen was a letter we got about three weeks ago. And as some of the other neighbors have already explained, I have, for example, I have four children and a husband. We also searched for over a year to find our property, and of primary importance to us was the land, not only for its, you know, enjoyment, the pure enjoyment of having some land. The house was secondary. Obviously, there's nicer places, there's, but the land was something we thought that would be really able to be enjoyed by our family for many years to come, as well as potentially increase in value over time. And so, obviously, hearing about industrial development coming in and doing, in that time period, that short window that we've had, some research, it's raised a lot of questions, some of which have already been brought up tonight. But speaking with real, everyone from Realtors to the, the commission, to going on Lakeview's website, has just, you know, some of the questions have been answered, which has been great and relieved some of our concerns. However, there's still so many unknowns, and there's even some things that have popped up tonight, as we've said, that we had not heard about even prior to tonight, and I'm sure a lot of the people here that are joining us from our road haven't even heard half of what we already have. So, I appreciate and thank you guys for listening to us and our concerns. I feel like that based on the discussions we've already had and some of the comments tonight, that this is a done deal. I don't know where they're at with the purchase agreement, or even if, whether they're at liberty to say that this is basically finalized pending the agreement of this vote. I don't know if that's even legal to ask. But it's concerning, given that the late information that we're getting, and I really empathize with Mr. Lano and appreciate his comments as well, because I feel like we are always going to be at opposite ends of the table with regard to this, because we live there, and I feel like you guys are making decisions, and this is your job, and this is the time you put in, which we appreciate very much, because we're, we're all for the development of Carver and the city. But at the same time, we're the ones that live there. I'm pretty sure, if I asked each of you privately, if, if you had the same situation and you knew an industrial business, no matter how clean, no matter how nice it was, was going in right in your backyard, and that the potential existed for more industrial and/or commercial development right behind you, because some of this, it will be directly adjacent to our property line, and obviously, some, as some of the people have mentioned, you can see very clearly where this is going to go. There's not enough elevation to really hide it. So, again, I, I, I just feel like you guys would be in the same position we are. You'd have the same concerns, and you'd be up here speaking as well, regardless of whatever the outcome would be. We're just hoping that, whatever that outcome is, that we can be involved a little bit more now that we know about it and some of the processes going forward, to not only ensure that the lighting and the, the sound barriers and the landscaping meets the needs of both the companies and the neighborhood, but that we can kind of maintain that, I don't know, that good relationship, because I know it's, it's very easy to get pretty sour about it, and, you know, speaking with our, our Realtor and knowing how much our property values could go down, that's just one part of the puzzle that's, that's negative for us. We understand that increasing the tax base is important, but like Mr. Lano said and spoke of, you know, and my Realtor even mentioned, you know, some sort of commercial development would be much more favorable in terms of the people that are already there. We existed, this neighborhood existed before two thousand eight. We were there prior to the, any of the comprehensive plans or any of the changes that have been ma, been made since. And just like I said, I've done so much research. I've, I was fortunate to have a member of my family that was in, has a legal background. He was involved in a lot of planning, commission meetings, just like this, many years ago in Carver County. And one of the things that he educated me on, as I'm getting an education tonight as well, but, and have throughout the, the weeks, is that good land use, kind of the principles of planning, start with residential and build out from there. And so, you start with your residential, as you know, and you kind of build out, like, with commercial and industrials further down the road. And so, when Mr. Lano said, "I'd like them down, further down the road," I totally understand that, because even talking with my seventeen-year-old son and just kind of explaining why I was coming tonight, why I was missing his first football game of his varsity career, I mean, it's minor, but at the same time, this is super important to us, yeah, as residents of the neighborhood. And he said, my seventeen-year-old said, "Why don't they just put it down the road off of two-twelve, further down, and if they're going to extend Levi Griffin Parkway, why wouldn't it be further down?" Because that makes more sense from a land planning standpoint, to put the industrial on the outer edge, where there's fewer houses, there's no residential, and it's, you know, you start with the commercial, which again, I think in, in my eyes and in my husband's eyes, it would be a little bit more favorable. It's less risky. We can get assurances from the company that they're very clean, which we have been getting some of those assurances, which is great, and we appreciate. But we don't know who this new tenant could be. They're the ones that are going to make those decisions. I don't know if we can be part of that process or not, but that is a huge concern that's been just brought up tonight, as well as, again, that some of the, some of the environmental and safety questions, which we've, we've start, we've kind of talked about. I'm still not totally sure what they do there. I know that, just looking at their website, when I saw some of the chemicals that were in their materials or their material list, basically, that they use neoprene, and I think it's nitro. I looked those up. I don't e, I didn't even know kind of what those were, but that they are potentially improbable cancer-causing agents, that they've been called that. And so, maybe those, I think what we're, they were saying was that those, those were not going to be a problem, because you're getting those parts in and you're not, basically, like heating and cooling, those types of things. I'm not sure if they may, can speak more to that. But I guess, again, the environmental and safety concerns is what if there was a disaster? What if there was a fire? The fire, you know, obviously, pollution doesn't know, no, it doesn't know any boundaries, can go in the air, soil, water. So, there could be problems with that. Does the city of Carver have some sort of plan in place, should something like that happen? And then, another concern I had is, just like I said, doing some research, I would like to know what kind of training, formal training, Lakeview has in place for their new and current employees, to ensure that they know how to use and work in that environment to prevent any type of disasters, such as fires or spills, that may impact the community, not only our area, but the school that's across the way, the new neighborhood, so it can extend beyond just our eight houses, but it's definitely of greater impact and concern of, to the people, people closest to that. So, those were some of my, I guess, largest concerns. And then, that we, we've asked a few other, other questions. I just want to make sure that I understand that they're answered. We talked about the truck traffic. I, I wanted to understand what their normal working hours are. Do they have, do they run twenty-four hours a day? Is it just five days a week? Is it weekends? Are we going to have any overnight work being done in that? Maybe not truck, trucks running, but maybe overnight workers there? Let's see. And then, and then, can we be involved as neighbors directly adjacent to this property, should this go through, which it sounds like, most likely it will, but the lighting and visual screening, we'd like to be actively involved in that process to ensure that everyone's happy? And then, any sound barriers that might be also put into place, we'd love to know about, just so it's not so intrusive onto the existing neighborhood? I think that was, that was kind of it, but we're just asking that you understand our perspective. Like I said, I don't think we're going to come to terms with agreeing that we want an industrial na, business there, because it's kind of opens a can of worms for more industrial to come. If an industrial park goes in there, it certainly would not be good for any of the people on our road. I'd be much more open to more of a commercial approach, and I think we can be involved more in the process going forward with that.
Can I ask you a question on that subject? Just because I want to, I want to understand your perspective as a neighbor, because we've talked a lot about, you know, all of these different developments coming in and being good neighbors. What do you see as the difference between an industrial and a commercial neighbor? What's appealing about that commercial neighbor?
Okay, so, so we, we had this discussion earlier this week, and my husband was in on that discussion, and he, he put it very simply. He's a teacher. He's really good at educating, and, and his, his answer, I thought, was really good, and he said, "A commercial company such as, like Mills Fleet Farm sells a product. They get in a product, they sell it. They don't change its form. They don't, you know, heat it, cool it, do anything to that product. They provide a service or a product that they sell." Whereas the industrial, there's some sort of transformation that takes place in that industrial facility. That would be the difference that we see.
Okay.
In the neighbors. And I said, you know, I don't know, like we said earlier, you know, I don't know if Walmart's the answer. I don't know, I don't think that maybe the neighbors would all be excited, as, as, as we, as, as some people would be, maybe not everybody. So, I don't think, you know, we're ever all going to be happy. I don't think that's possible, but I think we can work together on this. And I guess my worry is that this is already done, that we're bringing in an industrial company. I worry that it'll expand and be all industrial, or that...
I guess, you know, back to what Joyce said, though, like, what is it about industrial? I mean, because cr, job creation and job, you know?
Right. Right. Well, that's the envi, the environmental and safety impacts are my biggest fear with industrial.
So, when you hear industrial, I mean, that's where you're at with that? It's the environmental aspect of that that's concerning?
Environmental and safety, yes. And I, and, and just knowing the impacts of an industrial development behind a, a residential development, it's not going to be favorable for those residents in terms of any type of land or home appreciation in the future. It's just, it's just not what you want behind your house, and I think you could probably all agree that if, again, like, you maybe wouldn't want that. If you had a choice, you wouldn't want that behind your house either, so.
You know, I think the reality is, in today's environment, if there was a fire at Mills Fleet Farm, it might be more dangerous than if there was a fire at the facility they're talking about putting in, just because they probably have more chemicals at Mills Fleet Farm than these gentlemen are going to have.
But the fact is, is we don't, for us, just personally, we haven't had enough time to even gather a lot of information, but the, what we have gathered has raised the question, and that's why we're here, to get those answers about those ingredients that are in there. I've, I asked the question about what kind of training they do. I think that's really important. I've seen some things that are not as, as positive about them online as well. I know there's a third-party comments, but I still want to just find out some answers to, so that we can really, kind of allay our fears about what's potentially going next to us.
Let, let me make another suggestion. You're saying that this is kind of a done deal, and I would say that's probably true, because there's really not a good reason to reject this project. But what, what all residents need to do is look at the comprehensive plans that are in place, and the one that's going on now, we're, we are planning now for 2040. You want to be involved in that process.
I agree.
So, you can put your input as to what's coming in the future.
Right, and we said that. We can, we talked about that earlier this week, and that was something that we, we do want to be involved on now, knowing this going forward.
I, I, that's a big mistake. People come to these planning commission meetings or city council meetings after the project has been discussed for a long time and try to get their input in. But you need to get it in much earlier, and the comprehensive plan is the way to do that. We do one every ten years, and it changes, you know, in the ten-year period sometimes, but basically, it stays the same for a long time.
Although, I think you can probably agree that most people, including a lot of us here, when you're looking for a home, you're not, you're looking for a, a certain house size, a certain property size, things like that. I would venture to say that most people, unless they're intimately involved in a procedure like this now, or are a part of this type of a board or council, would not go that far to look at a plan, and even if they do, knowing that it could change, as we saw earlier, and, and, you know, it's not necessarily set in stone at that time anyway. So, I understand what you're saying. I totally get it, but at the same time, you know, this is what this hearing is about, is to give the public feedback and the residential feedback before the decision is made. And I feel like maybe it's going to be too late in this case, but that's why we're all here, because we want our voices heard. We're part of the community. We're your neighbors, whether we're part of Delgrande Township or part of Carver, so that's why we're all here.
And we do appreciate, I mean, all the time that you spent in the research. I mean, I do certainly. I'm sure that echoes with everybody up here, because we all want to do our due diligence, you know?
Right.
And speaking of, of a company coming in, I mean, I don't want to totally assume, but I mean, it sounds like, just from our brief conversation, that, you know, he's as concerned about his employees' health and wellness as he is about the community's health and wellness.
Right, right, and we understand that too, but we still would like if they wanted to move by Lakeview.
Right, so I think I want to go, I just, I just want to go back to the very initial question that you asked about, like, why couldn't this be somewhere else? Because I think a lot of community people will see it that way, that, that aren't involved in this. So, if we can just clarify simply, you know, when, when your seventeen-year-old said, "Well, why can't it just be west of Mills Fleet Farm? Why can't we just do it there?"
Because he knows that there's less resident, you know, there's, there's less impact, I guess, on, on people, because it's, you know, it's, it's farmland, and it's, it's further down. It's off a main corridor, which you see, you know, if you go into Shakopee, that's where all, all along one-sixty-nine are all those industrial developments and a lot of commercial as well, and so you don't see a lot of houses stacked up to them.
How do you answer that question? Can you, you know, this...
It's a very good question. I would piggyback after Commissioner Wagon's comments. It's similar to the comp plan. If you think about a neighborhood that has empty lots in it, and it's gone through the planning process, just like a comp plan process, it's gone through the planning process, and there's ten empty lots, and you have, you have the one in the cul-de-sac that had, and you don't have neighbors on either side, you know, but the property is owned for a single family. The developers purchased the property. They've put in all the roads, and Dana decides she wants to build a house there, and she applies for her building permit. And then, I say, "Well, why can't you just move five lots down, because I have these empty lots on either side of me?" Well, Dana is buying the lot from someone who invested, knowing that they can build a single-family house there. The city's only just permitted it, making sure they've checked all the boxes. And so, similar to a house, just like Dana has the right to, to build on that lot, and the developer has the right to sell her that lot. Mills, as Mr. Lano stated, they made an investment in that property, and they made an investment that they could, based on the comprehensive plan at that time, they could sell it for commercial or industrial. And now, what we'd be telling Lakeview is, because they want to buy it... And now what we'd be telling Lakeview is, because they want to buy it, because we have lots on empty either side of us that are vacant, why don't you just move five down? Because we like the empty lots, which I totally appreciate and understand. But they have the right to buy it. And Mills, I can tell you, probably has, wants every right to be able to sell that because they have that investment into that land. And so to Commissioner Wagen's comment, unless the city can show that somehow they're violating the zoning ordinance or land use, the rest of it, even though it's very important, it's, it's in a lot of ways not germane to the decisions that the city council had and the planning commission have to make. They have to check setbacks. They have to make sure that they have the public infrastructure. The concern for the environment is there, but the planning commission and city council really aren't regulators of the environmental aspects. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is. And I respect the comments and I admire the due diligence that you've done in, in researching this. But the, the done deal connotation, I have to, to just meet, kind of head on and say that the process has been going on, to the commission's point, for a decade. Someone has decided to kind of push the button and do a development project. That doesn't necessarily mean that the project started three weeks ago. The project theoretically started in 2008. It's just taken to now for someone to say, "I want to build a home on that empty lot." That we're all used to. I mean, I've had that in the last home that I built. We loved, you know, having that backyard. Our kids played in it. And then all of a sudden, one summer, three homes built. And then all of a sudden, we had neighbors in our backyard. And it's unfortunately, and fortunately, depending upon your respective perspective, one of the things that we're going to, I think, have our ups and downs as a community with. And that was one of the things that I, I mentioned is, you know, the Geshstock property, which is just to the west of this Fleet Farm property, is a discussion point that we want to have with that whole Creek Ridge neighborhood, because that's in the comp plan and it has a similar guidance. And that is immediately adjacent. You know, Erin and I went to that neighborhood earlier this week. And, you know, there is quite a bit of a grade change. And I, I would suspect, I can't guarantee, but it, it's going to be very hard to see Lakeview from the bottom of that cul-de-sac, just because there's such a severe grade change. I would suspect it to be hard to see building too. But to the commission's point and to the concerns about having that ongoing conversation, talking about this 2040 comp plan is significant. I mean, and it's in addition to making, making these comments. It's a, it's a fantastic narrative to say, when the 2040 comprehensive plan was being enacted, I was participating, I've been concerned about industrial, retail, et cetera, in this area. I'm adding on to these comments. And we are going to make our best efforts to include Creek Ridge. And this is a great opportunity, maybe under unfortunate circumstances, to include that neighborhood intentionally in our comprehensive plan process, because there are going to be a series of development projects, whether it's industrial or retail, and whether it's Walmart or Target or Hy-Vee, there'll likely be in the next five years, another project. And we want to have this ongoing relationship with Creek Ridge. But to the initial point, the city has a process and a plan that says someone has the right to build unless we can show they violate our code. And so it's up to the planning commission to make that determination based on the city planner's staff review and comments that are made by the public. The planning commission makes a recommendation of those findings of fact to the city council. And the process goes on.
Can I just respond to that? So the last thing I'm just going to say is that, for my, some of my initial questions, if Lakeview or the broker have any feedback that they can offer to that, as well as just, I guess, just to express being, although I, I appreciate it and I want to be part of the discussion going forward, it is disappointing when you come to the meeting and hear or have had previous discussions in which you're, you're told that, or not, not told just outright, but basically that this is, this is going to happen, you know, we'll work with you. That's great. But coming to the hearing and, and feeling like we can speak our mind and we can move forward together, which is great, but also knowing that pretty much barring anything major that's said at this meeting that this is kind of a formality or another box to check to kind of get the process started is, is disappointing as, as someone who's going to be directly affected by it. So that's all I'm saying, and I, I appreciate all your time. I want to work together going forward so that we aren't in the same position for future development. Thank you.
My name's Joe Wickenhozer. I live on Jonathan Carver Parkway. All the comment I want to make is, I am happy with Fleet Farm and going in there, seeing the clientele that are shopping in there. However, since you put that low-income housing up over here on my farm, never before in my life have I seen someone parked down by my machine shed. And I do, I do not have a permit or carry. I'm just going to go down there and take the bullets if they come. But I have to have a mung in there saying, and I say to them, "What are you looking for?" And he replies, "Chickens." And I have to do nothing except be a little bit scared that he has a gun. Another time, I have a black African-American come down there and wanted me to teach him how to drive tractor. I said, "I'm no teacher. You got to go." He did not want to go. Never before, living there 64 years, did I ever have a person come on my farm, only to come back a week later with a hooded sweatshirt, hands in the pockets, and coming up to me saying, "Hey, bro, I was thinking you could give up 20 bucks." That's their way of panhandling. But I felt very uncomfortable with his hands in a hooded sweatshirt. So I just want to say to you people in Creek Ridge, be thankful I don't send them around the corner and say, "Them people down there have chickens and $20 bills."
Madam Chair.
Sir, I think we're going to just, thank you. I think those comments probably need to be directed to a more appropriate group.
No, I'm just saying, it could be worse. It's the only point I make. It could be worse things than industrial.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to thank you for your comments, but for the sake of time, if we could move on to other comments related directly to the, the question at hand, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, do we have any more comments related to the current topic? I don't think so. Erin?
Thank you. I am going to go a little bit out of.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and then we'll move forward, okay?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I am going to.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to move forward with the rezoning and the preliminary plat motions before Brent gives a brief presentation about TIF and we address some of those questions.
Okay.
Perfect. I will make a motion to rezone the property from agricultural to industrial for the development of Lakeview Industries. Do I need to make separate motions for each one?
Yes.
All right, we'll leave it there.
I'll second. You can have it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Lakeview Industries. Second to the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to open up the conversation.
Right.
Through your presentation. Thank you.
TIF, thank you.
So in your packet is a resolution related to tax increment financing. And so with the Lakeview project and the Trinity, not Trinity, Trident. I'm blaming you for that one. We're talking about tax increment financing and TIF. And I think all too often, and we heard some of this feedback, it's a really good opportunity to kind of step back and say, "Let's get away from the jargon and let's try to keep this as, as basic as possible." So when I first learned about tax increment about 20 years ago, unfortunately now, the city administrator in Oakdale brought out some transparencies, if anyone knows what those are. And had basically this similar slide that, but, you know, aside from all kind of the noise and agreements and kind of high finance, tax increment financing, or otherwise known as TIF, is really pretty basic. And so if you look at this farm field, it could be any farm field, they pay $300 in taxes. And so generally, that's split into thirds, where the city would get a third, the county would get a third, and the school district. It's very, it's a lot more complicated than that. But essentially, that's the $100 that's paid on that undeveloped piece of property. Then you have a project. Now they're paying $3,000 instead of that $300. So the, they had that base rate of that undeveloped property at 300. They build their building, they make all these improvements. You have this beautiful building. And now that $3,000 is split up into $1,000 for the city, $1,000 for the county, and $1,000 for the school district. So just by some simple math, the, the difference, or what folks would call the increment of the tax increment financing is $900 out of each of those jurisdictions. And so the key piece to remember is, you know, some folks, and this is a little bit of a political perspective, but some folks will say, "Well, the city and the county and the school district are losing money because of this increment district." The kind of below-the-surface piece to that, you know, the statement on its face is accurate. Below the surface, though, is they're, they're maintaining their existing level of tax base. So if the project would have never happened, they're still keeping that $100 that they get each year. With the new building, though, it's generating that additional $2,700. And so that's what's captured. And so the big piece to that is what you'll hear is called "but for." And so that $2,700 of increment, if you wouldn't apply it to the project but for that increment, the project wouldn't happen. And so the rationale is, if you don't apply that increment, you still end up with the farm field. And so the test that the city council have to go through is to look at that and the applicant, in this instance, Lakeview, and in the future instance, Trident, will have to show that but for that increment, that subsidy, they wouldn't be able to make their project go. And that there's very specific rules. I kind of generalized them here, site work, roads, et cetera. In the case of Lakeview, the majority of their increment actually is going to be going towards public infrastructure, to go toward the construction of what's formerly known as Dewalter, but will likely change to Commerce. Now, they'll be, depending upon where the bids come in, there'll be some increment that can be put towards site work. Right now, we're estimating that could be around the $75,000 mark. But it's kind of still up in the air until we get the bids. If the project or if Lakeview decides to move forward, there's provisions within the increment district. If they add on to their building, they could collect that increment and then put it towards additional development. And the hope, the goal of that, frankly, is to take that new increment and invest it so that you can build tax base, you can create jobs and additional investment. And so what the resolution is asking the planning commission tonight is, nothing related to the actual finance part of it, but just to say that this project, the Lakeview project, is consistent with your comp plan and zoning ordinance, et cetera, and that you're not doing a housing district, for example, in the middle of an industrial district. Or, so like, the Trinity, Trinity Trident project, you know, wouldn't be a good candidate where Lakeview's going and vice versa. And so we're asking the planning commission to consider that resolution, basically supporting the concept that this is an acceptable use within this area. Happy to answer any questions.
Is our resolution purely applying to the Lakeview Industries property? Or is it both properties?
Just the Lakeview. So if there's not any questions, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution in your packet.
I don't have, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, but just a comment from what I understand of the TIF. This definitely fits, especially knowing about improving the public infrastructure for some major work on a new road, expanded, or, so. I see the alignment. I see the, the reason for it.
Madam Chair, I would echo the same. The TIF money, TIF funding, the TIF is designed to help eliminate the barriers of entry into the market. And specifically, I think, as we're talking about infrastructure being one of those barriers, that this would be an appropriate use. Certainly something that I, I would support.
I just have one clarifying question. So we're talking specifically in regard to the Lakeview project?
Correct.
But not the Trident project?
Correct. You'll likely have to take a similar action on that project.
That's what I understood.
In the future. But this one is just ahead of that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, this has a lot more to do with the infrastructure.
Well, part of it is that, right?
And the other project would have more to do with housing.
Well, there's.
I think it, I appreciate the conversation. I just think we'd be, the more that we talk about Trident, the more complicated it's going to get.
Good point.
So the matter before the commission tonight is to determine whether or not the district aligns with the land use principles adopted by the city.
And does it typically take place during the preliminary plat phase?
It's really, it doesn't matter, frankly. I mean, it's, the public hearing for the tax increment plan is on Tuesday. So you just have to do it before the council can take action. So it's a matter of discretion for council, planning commission, staff. And all the, all these pieces are kind of like moving parts or trying to move them in parallel, but with none, nothing getting too far.
Sure.
Right.
In advance, so.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yep. So it's common for it to go hand to hand? I mean, together like this?
Somewhat, yes. But the timing could be off, is what his point is, because not everything aligned perfectly.
Correct.
From a timing perspective, okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recommend approval for modification of development for District One and the TIF financing plan for the development of Lakeview Industries.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Okay, then we can move on to item number five. New business.
Madam Chair, there's no new business on the agenda tonight.
Sounds lovely.
Fantastic.
Okay, and then number six, communications. Do you have anything for us, Courtney?
No, the only thing, I was just thinking, this has been, what, the fourth time this month that you guys have gotten together? This is a really long meeting. This has been a tough slog. So thank you all for your time and doing your homework and coming prepared to these meetings.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll be here next Thursday.
That's next month.
We, we do get time and a half of this, right?
Absolutely. Which is zero times 1.5.
We will ask for coffee next time. We'll note that. Anything else on?
I'll just echo Courtney's comments. I really appreciate your flexibility. This was, this was a long meeting for a special meeting. So I really appreciate one of those last summer nights that you're willing to join us here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.